Is it done?
Yes.
Okay. Friends, good. Janet, can I trouble you to shut those doors? Yeah. Thank you. Should be unlocked. Friends, good evening. Welcome to Council Chambers. I'm Mayor Brian Marlin. I want to welcome you here this evening to this very timely and important discussion. I have a number of staff people with me this evening, and they'll introduce themselves along with our guests. But I do want to take a moment to acknowledge my council colleagues who are in the audience this evening. Mayor Protam Janet Dillon is here along with Councilmember Lesch, and I believe Councilmember Gierba is also here. Oh, off to the side. Very good. We all welcome you here and appreciate that you took time out of your busy schedules to join us. We're going to try to keep tonight's town hall to about an hour and a half. We do have a very lengthy and thorough presentation that I think you'll find very informative. That'll take every bit of 35 to 45 minutes. At the conclusion of our presentation, we will entertain questions and comments from you all. We are also live streaming tonight on YouTube, so I'll sort of be moderating the question and comment period, and I'll be jumping back and forth between those of you who are in the audience and those who are participating, watching us online. I do want to be very clear and set some expectations for tonight. The city of Saline has not developed consensus on the future of our Milpon Dam. I think that is likely to occur sometime towards the end of the first quarter 2025. So what we're here tonight to present are the pros and cons, the costs of preserving the existing asset, the pros, cons, and costs of removing the dam and creating a more natural space at Milpon Park. For those who are in the audience, those who are watching at home, and those who may be reading about this town hall after the fact, the public comment period where the city of Saline will actively solicit your questions, concerns, and questions and concerns from your neighbors and other stakeholders will run through January the 31st, 2025. So about just slightly less than a two-month period for additional public comments. I'll also note that the presentation that'll be shared this evening will be put on the city's website either tomorrow or Wednesday, so for those of you who'd like to take a second look at it, or if you have friends, neighbors, family, who'd like to review it, it will be available on our city website. City manager, city engineer, unless I'm missing anything, I think I'm going to turn it over to both of you to introduce our guests and begin the presentation.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Can everybody hear me? Okay. I think we have four presenters tonight. I think we'll just introduce ourselves as we get to our part of the presentation. I'm Tasha Humphreys, city engineer. This first slide is a brief agenda of what we're going to go over tonight. I'd like to start out, though, tonight with why we are all here and what is the current state of the dam. And we are currently in the public engagement phase of the feasibility study. We were fortunate to receive some funds to study the feasibility of removing the dam, and we are here to let everybody know what we found out about that. As the mayor said, no decision has been made on the future of the dam, which is the third bullet here. I am very proud that we are here ahead of when a decision needs to be made. We're taking a proactive approach to risk reduction. One of the items that the engineering department does is project our expenditures into capital investment of our infrastructure. And we have right now put in our capital improvement plan $6 million of expenditures in the very end of our current capital improvement plan. So our capital improvement plan is a five-year plan going through 2030, and that's what's at the end of this timeline here. How that fund is going to be, we know that the dam requires investment, as we will go through in tonight's presentation. But like I said, I'm pleased that we are presenting options to the public well before a decision actually needs to be made. I'm going to start out with just a little basic facts on the dam. We are in the River Rayson watershed. We are in the upstream portion of the River Rayson watershed. This slide shows the current location of the dam in the River Rayson watershed. The dam was originally built in the 1800s. In 1930s, Henry Ford rebuilt the dam. It had an earthen embankment failure in the late 1960s, so the dam in its current state was rebuilt in 1973 with the radial gates. This is a picture from when a large storm event in 1947 overtopped the existing dam, or the dam, I should say, before the radial gates. And this is a picture of when the earthen berm failed in 1968. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Sean Middleton.
How does this sound? Are you hearing me okay? Okay. I'll try and make a point of staying close to it. My name is Sean Middleton with Spicer Group. I'm a civil engineer. I have a background in water resources. I've been working on dams for about 30 years, off and on, at different levels, both rehabilitation and reconstruction and removal. So I've kind of been on both sides of this fence and been in similar meetings to this in the past. I'm going to kind of hit on a variety of things going through here that kind of will set us up for the rest of the presenters here to talk about our feasibility study. So Tasha just mentioned some dam failures on the Saline Dam. There's been dam failures in Michigan. Currently, on the dam safety website, as a matter of fact, we got some representatives from Eagle here, and there's 41 dams that are known to fail. I'm sure it's more than that. That's probably what's documented. But Akeef, in 1986, there was 14 dams that failed in the center and the west side of the state. And the relevance of those is shortly after that is when the Dam Safety Act became a law. And you'll see that's important because anything we do with the dam has to meet regulatory requirements. So when this large event happened, all 14 of these dams failed, it was followed up by legislation that resulted in the Dam Safety Act. A couple other dams that failed, but he's listed just for a little bit of reference to show that this happens. The Fluke Dam, it's in Washtenaw County, and it was a radial gate, so we just thought it important to show you that. That's the kind of gate you have here on your dam. Elsie Dam was a small breach that happened north of Lansing. It was on a river similar in size and watershed to the Saline Dam. And so we just noted, it was a small head dam. It eroded. It was old. It wasn't taken care of, and eventually it undermined and washed out, and the entire impoundment drained out. Nobody was hurt, but that was recent. Those happened very recent. On a much bigger scale, I think everybody's well aware of the dams that failed up in Midland and Gladwin Counties with the Four Lakes Dam failure. And we're not talking about these because these are similar to your dam. The reason we have these in the slides is really what came about after these dams failed. The state was very proactive in looking at what do we do to improve safety and reduce risk? And so they created a dam safety task force and produced a report in 2021. There's a lot that's in that report, and I won't go through all those details, but a couple key things. Some of the recommendations were based on FEMA's template or what they do on dams across the country. And a key component of that is the design flood. And a little bit technical, but it's important because it drives a lot of things we'll talk about tonight. So right now, the dam is required by state law to pass the 200-year event. It's what's considered a significant hazard dam, and I'll talk more about that in a second. And so it has to pass this event. And another way of looking at the 200 years, call it a half percent chance of occurring in any given year. That's probably a better way of looking at it because you'd have a 200-year event every couple of years. But statistically, a half percent in any given year. That's right now what the design is. If you go to the FEMA rules, and for significant dams, it potentially could have to pass what they call a 1,000-year event, like a tenth of a percent per year. So it becomes a lot higher standard. The bar gets raised, and you'll see later why that's important. So dam safety in Michigan, as I mentioned, we had the basically regulation established in the late 1980s as a result of those dam failures in '86. There were some in '85 as well. And what happened in '94, the state of Michigan had all kinds of environmental laws. They got compiled together into one. All the laws came together into one act in 1994 called Enripa, and that's why the Dam Safety Act is called Part 315. It's part of that compilation of laws. You hear the term "Part 315," it's talking about the dam safety act. And that basically has a lot of different requirements and rules around it, but some big drivers in it are dam inspections are required for all regulated dams in the state. Any deficiencies identified need to be addressed. And a big thing out of that is owners of dams are liable. The owner of the dam is liable for damage, whether it's economic, environmental, loss of life, the owner's liable for that. So it's a heavy risk put on the owner of a dam. As I mentioned, it's administered by Eagle, so they oversee, make sure dam inspections are done, they review the inspections, they follow through to make sure the work is done, identify deficiencies are being taken care of. And there's about 2,500 dams in the state, and that's probably a big plus or minus. Who knows? There's all kinds of hidden dams in woods and farm fields and everything. But there's 813 that are regulated, and the state of Michigan, a regulated dam is basically taller than six feet during a design flood, and it pounds more than five acres. If that's the case, then it's regulated. The Saline Dam's a regulated dam. There's also 235 lake level act dams, and those are court-ordered levels on a lake. Saline Dam has a court-ordered level. And between those two, those are the ones that require inspections. Under the Dam Safety Act, they're between three and five years. Inspections are required based on the hazard rating. And then a lake level is every three years. And that's what we're under. So you get an inspection on the Saline every three years. I'm going to hit on two things that sometimes get confused together. So I'm going to talk about hazard potential classification, and I'm going to talk about the condition assessment of a dam. So hazard potential classification has everything to do with what's downstream and if a dam fails. So if a dam were to wash out and breach, what that does downstream is how you classify the hazard of a structure. So a low hazard dam has basically loss of life is not expected, and really even environmental, economic, or lifeline, which lifeline would be a road that gets washed out that EMS vehicles may need to use, is not expected. A significant hazard dam, still no loss of life is expected, but you start anticipating impacts to whether the economic, environmental, or lifeline components downstream. And that's what Saline Dam is, and I'll talk a little bit about some of those factors. Then a high hazard dam, its loss of life is probable. And so when you look at a dam and you simulate it failing, and if there's homes that are down in the floodplain with very short warnings, you can be in a high hazard dam situation. And we're not here. We're in a significant. And some of those things downstream of here, we have the wastewater treatment plant, there's US 12 crossing Monroe Street pedestrian bridge, all potential loss of lifelines to the city. That area in pink is from inundation mapping that was done, I can't remember, it was quite a while ago, right? Been around a bit. But that kind of roughly indicates where, if the dam were to breach, where that flood wave would progress downstream. That's a hazard rating. On the other side is the condition assessment. This is actually talking about the structure itself and what condition it's in. And so sometimes the terms will get intermingled and can be a little confusing. But so you have four different condition assessments. I won't get into the details of reading them, but satisfactory is basically you're meeting all the regulatory requirements, the dam's in good condition, it can even handle kind of handle events beyond the design, you know, those rare events. It can handle all those. A dam in fair condition is still easily meeting all the regulatory requirements. You may start to see, you know, it's starting to show its age a little bit, you know, there'll be some maybe concrete issues, maybe trees are going on the embankment. There's different things that can affect it into the fair category, but it's still stable and it passes all the design criteria. And it would take a really rare event to kind of breach it or make it fail. And so a big seismic event, we don't have that a lot here, or a big hydraulic event, but well beyond its design, you know, well beyond regulatory requirements. A poor dam continued to grow older in age. If you can imagine, it may have some problems with operation, with gates, concrete's in worse condition, and now maybe a little more frequent event could cause the dam to fail. Still kind of holding the line maybe a little bit regulatory-wise where you don't have to, you're still going to have to do a lot of work on it, but you're still kind of, you know, meeting the requirements. Then unsatisfactory is just like it says, it is not meeting a regulatory requirement, whether it's hydraulic, structural, stability, you know, whatever it is, it's not meeting criteria. And so with a Saline Dam, you know, currently we're fair condition. I kind of reiterate what Tasha said is, this is, it's kind of refreshing to be talking about this right now in a dam. A lot of times when we come in, it feels like the nth, 11th hour, and maybe the 59th minute, where the dam's, you know, on the borderline of failing, there's no money, nobody's been planning for it, and everybody's like, what are we going to do? We want to keep the impoundment, but we don't have any money. So you just kind of get put in a predicament. We're here, we're ahead of that curve, so just keep, I'm sorry, so thank you, though, for pointing that out. So we're ahead of the curve, and so the good news is we can plan for this. So but we want to point out, though, if we don't do any work, we don't invest any money into it, it's going to continue to degrade. It's not going to self-heal. The dam's going to get worse, obviously, and we're going to start slipping towards the poor. And then there's also some regulatory requirements that I mentioned that could pop up if legislation changes. Next year, we could have a new bar. It's raised higher. And immediately, we could be in the unsatisfactory area because we don't meet the hydraulic capacity of the dam. We'll have to work towards a solution. So we're sitting in fair, but it doesn't take much to drift. We did, I'll try and go through these quick. We did a dam inspection report in 2020. Basically, we classified the dam as fair. There was some concrete spalling and different things we observed. Also, at about the same time, the city, and again, I'll give them credit because they're forward-thinking here, currently, the dam, there's flows that come from Eagle that you have to show that the dam passes, and the dam currently does that. We meet that regulatory requirement. But it's also based on, as you can, everybody can imagine, and we've seen a lot of changes in storms in the state of Michigan. They're more intense, higher rainfall amounts, more frequency, higher frequency. And so what happens regionally is you publish these rainfall atlases. And so there was a TP-40 like 20 years ago, and then there's a Bulletin 71 we've been using for a long time, and we're still kind of using it regulatory-wise, and we're shifting to a new one called NOAA Atlas 14. And each time you do that, you get more current data, so what tends to do is your storm events are bigger. So Bulletin 71 for the 200 years was like five inches of rain. NOAA Atlas 14 is five and three quarters. Doesn't sound like a big change, but that little bit, if applied to this dam, basically puts us right at the edge of not exceeding capacity. No free board, we're filling, the gates better be wide open and moving it all. So the city asked us to look into that, and we did. We kind of concluded that if we were to switch the atlas and look at a higher runoff of the bigger storm, we could have implications. But the current regulation is being met. It was just some foresight on the city to look into that. We did a structural inspection in 2021. Basically, kind of shut off flow to the impoundment, allowed us to get in there, walk around. A lot of this is just visual inspections. We're taking a lot of photos up close, looking at cracks, different conditions in the dam. We do what we call sounding, which is basically banging on concrete with a hammer, more or less. And when you hit sound concrete, it makes kind of a pinging noise that's really clear. When you hit delaminated concrete, it's a very hollow noise. And you can look at the face of a wall, and it can look very well, but when you sound it, you find out that it's not structurally sound. It can have issues with it. 2023, every three years, we did another inspection. Still had a fair rating. We looked at some recommendations, reconstructing or repairing intermediate pier walls. I'll show you some pictures of that. Continue to remove brush, it really isn't too much. Continue to monitor depressions in the right embankment. There's been some notes about a little low spot, so we're going to monitor that and watch that. Repair erosion, and then develop operational procedures for cold weather gate operation, and then inspect some scour and undercutting downstream of the Stilling Basin. So just some kind of quick photos of existing conditions. This is very, thank you, pretty typical of different spots in the dam, but this is what we refer, we call spalling, so that concrete's spalling off. There's also hairline cracks that are happening here. We've noticed little differences from 20 to 23, you know, not big things that jump out, but there are small changes happening, getting worse. This area, if you can see the red hatching, I think it shows up okay. That is where we sounded the wall with our hammers, and we had that kind of that hollow sound that came back. That area probably has some delamination behind that wall. Even though the wall looks okay behind it, the concrete's starting to get a little punky and, you know, needs to be watched. And this is also, as you can tell, kind of a critical component of the dam because that gate's taking a load of the water. It's transferred to those arms. Those arms are transferred to a pin. It all goes into the concrete. So there's a lot, you know, a lot of force being applied right there. Just looking at the other side, there's some hairline cracks again. There's what we refer to as efflorescence. That's the kind of chalky white stuff you're seeing there. That's a result of chlorides kind of being leached out of concrete. So likely here, it's, you know, water's falling on the concrete, leaching into it, and then back out, and it pulls out those chlorides, and then they dry up on the outside. This is a close-up picture of one of the pin areas for the Teener Gate. Looks like they might have patched this a few years ago. You can see in the upper left-hand corner, and then there's also some hairline cracks on top of that. I think this is my last photo. One thing to point out here, it's, again, it's spalling concrete at the waterline, but this one actually has rebar exposed, and the problem with rebar getting exposed is then it immediately starts to rust, and when rebar rusts, it expands, which then pops off more concrete, and then that gets rusted, and it kind of chases itself out. So these are areas you want to get to relatively fast. This is the support for the Teener Gate, the lift. We noticed a crack there, obviously a very critical component of the dam, so it's something we want to keep an eye out and look at, make some improvements to. So I'll finish up with this slide before I turn it over to Aaron, and some of it Tasha's mentioned already, but, you know, one thing, I guess, the good news is, basically, there was only two out of, what was it, 50 applicants that received funding for a feasibility study. And so Saline did a nice job of getting this grant, and this grant is, you know, it's funded by Eagle, and as I mentioned earlier, it's called the Dam Risk Reduction Grant Program, and the key words is "risk reduction." So Eagle's looking, if you want to reduce risk, you eliminate the risk, right? If you don't have a dam, you don't have risk. So that's like, that's like the first thing on the list for funding of construction or even studies. It doesn't mean that's what we're doing. It just means that's kind of their priority then. They also fund improvements, you know, more spillway capacity, improving a dam embankment, and that's reducing risk. But the point I'm making is just not quite as much as taking a dam out. So the goals were to, you know, look at the feasibility of removing the dam. That's one of the fundamental things we're looking at here. Is it possible to do it? And what are the costs? And so we've done a lot with that, and I won't get into all the details. Some of that may come up when Kevin's talking. We look at permitting requirements, and we are looking at both, even though it's a dam removal feasibility study, we have evaluated rehab and reconstruction components, too, with cost. So the scope is outlined here. We're doing a lot of survey work, work with the river, environmental assessments, sediment assessments. We did hydraulics, had grass modeling, looked at alternatives and cost estimates. So with that, I'm going to turn it over first with Aaron to start with a kind of geomorphic and environmental side.
Hi, everyone. My name is Aaron Snell. My training is in biology, for the most part. I started a company, Streamside Eco, in 2010, and I've got a partner in that endeavor. I've worked with Sean on and off, I think, for about 22 years or so, we were talking about. And as he spoke, it came to mind that the first feasibility study that we worked on together was for the Elsie Dam. And we told them that they had some issues there that they had to deal with or they were going to have problems. And that was one that Sean had mentioned here at the beginning of the presentation that failed, partially failed in 2023. So we've been through some things together, I guess. I've just got a few slides. I'm far more comfortable waist-deep in the river than I am speaking into a microphone, so I'm going to do my best here. Spicer asked me to do a few different things for the feasibility study. The first one I'm going to talk about is a geomorphic assessment. There are very few people, I think, that know what the heck geomorphic means. It's basically, we're studying how the water shapes the land. So we're within this watershed. Anytime rain falls within this watershed, it's going to work its way through a series of, you know, gullies and small streams and on down into the Saline River. So what they asked me to do was take a look at the Saline River to let them know how stable it is. Oops. I don't think I did that. How stable it is and to help understand what the entire river system might look like if the dam were to be removed. So I essentially went out and looked at three different sections of river. The red that you can see is the upper river above the impoundment. I looked at the impoundment itself, and then I looked at about a one-mile section of the stream of the river that is downstream of the dam. And in each of those reaches, we collected survey data, including the cross-section of the river, which is, there's an illustration there at the bottom. It's just a cut across the river, so you can see the cross-section. We looked at the profile of the river, which basically gives us stream slope, and then I looked at the plan view of the river. So that's how the river meanders across the landscape. We looked at bed materials. We looked at a whole bunch of different factors, basically. You know, this is probably a presentation in itself, if you want all the details. But the guidance that I tried to provide is, is the existing river stable? If the dam were to be removed, what might the river look like through the former impoundment? The next thing I did was a mussel survey. Freshwater mussels, there's about 42 different species in Michigan, and this falls under the permitting category that Sean had mentioned. Mussels have become a really big deal in Michigan over the past 10 years or so. They're a pretty good indicator of environmental health. There's several species that are threatened or endangered for a variety of reasons. I went out and looked at five different sites. One upstream of the dam on the Saline River itself, one on the small tributary that comes into the impoundment more from the northeast. We had a site right below the dam. We had a site within the impoundment, and then another one down at Monroe Avenue. Here's some of the mussels that we found. To me, one of the most interesting things about mussels is actually the names. They can be pretty funny and interesting. We did end up finding one state-threatened species, which is called the slipper shell. We found that at the upstream site, up above the impoundment. So that mussel would be protected under state law. And that's my hand there in the top-left picture. Those are the slipper shells. Those are adult mussels. They don't get very big. There's a variety in that bottom photo of both bed shells and live specimens that we found of various species. So the reason that we're looking at this is because if the dam were to be removed, there's going to have to be a pretty large effort put forth to make sure that these mussels are protected. Most of them we found up above the dam, and those likely would not be impacted by removal of the dam. We found quite a few live ones just below the dam, and then down by Monroe Avenue, we did not find any live mussels. So this is what we call reconnaissance survey. It's a really elementary-level survey, basically a quick look. If this project were to move forward, there'd have to be a lot more effort put forth to study these mussels and the impacts the removal of the dam might have. And you're going to notice that, I mentioned, there's only a few slides that I have. You might be asking why I'm not talking about fish or mackerel and vertebrates or anything These are kind of the, maybe a bottleneck, maybe that's not the right word, but this is something that permitting is really focused on. We're going to have to, if the project moved forward, we'd have to talk about fish and other kinds of critters, but this is just kind of a baseline for the feasibility study, trying to pick out things that we will have to deal with that could be fairly significant. I've worked on lots and lots of dam removal projects throughout the state. I think these, these are a few benefits of dam removal that I thought I'd mention. I think these are, they're not really up for debate, these are, these are, these are true benefits that you see in just about every dam removal project. Restore free, free passage for fish and other aquatic mammals. In its current state, if you're a fish that needs to get up the river to spawn and you hit a dam, that's the end of the road in most cases, you can't make it any further up into the headwaters. And interestingly, a lot of the mussels that you find depend on a fish host in their life history. So these mussels will attach their, basically their egg to a fish, and then the fish will swim upstream as far as it can go, and then the egg falls off and develops into a mussel. So a lot of, you know, a lot of these critters that live in the stream, their life histories are interrelated, so fish can't make it any further, neither can a mussel in that example. Removal of a dam typically improves water quality. The Saline River at one time would have been free-flowing before the dam was put in place. Now that the dam is there, you see, the impoundment basically serves as a sink for pollutants. So any of the water coming off of the farmland or the forest land or whatever's the case in the upper watershed, most of that is going to settle out in the impoundment. That's why you see the impoundment start to fill in over time, it's the sediment, and the sediment carries all sorts of nutrients and other pollutants, basically can attach themselves to the sediment and settle out. And the last bullet I have is, if you remove a dam, you restore the natural movement of sediment, organic debris, and everything else. A river's job really is to transport the water and the sediment provided by the watershed, and it needs that water and it needs that sediment to stay stable over time. So oftentimes, because all the sediment falls to the bottom in the impoundment, the river downstream of the dam is described as sediment-starved, that sediment is not passing through, and the river actually needs that sediment to help maintain its stability. So a lot of times you'll see downstream of a dam, there's a lot of erosion, and part of the reason for that is that it's not carrying a sediment load. So there's my five-minute introductory to some geomorphology and biology and river function. I think that's my last slide. And Kevin is going to talk a lot more specifically about the particulars of the feasibility study.
Thank you, Aaron. My name is Kevin Wilks, I'm a civil engineer, project manager at Spicer Group, have been involved with the Celine River Dam since our first inspection in 2020. As Aaron kind of mentioned, the first slide I'm going to talk about here is about the impoundment sedimentation. As part of the feasibility study, we did a survey of the impoundment. We surveyed both the top of sediment and the sediment depths, so what that was able to allow us to do is estimate the quantity of sediment that has filled into the impoundment over time. What we found is approximately thirty percent of the impoundment is actually filled with sediment that has accumulated that would have otherwise gone downstream. To put that into perspective, just a neat little tidbit, that's about twenty-three Olympic swimming pools worth of sediment that has accumulated. Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. Eagle has some guidance about sediment sampling and testing and analysis for dredging projects. If the Celine River Dam were to be removed, we would have to do something with all of the sediment that would come with it. Okay, this one's a little quieter than the other one, I think. If the Celine River Dam is removed, we have to manage the sediment in some way. And part of what guides how we would manage the sediment is whether or not the sediment is contaminated with any kind of toxins or heavy metals. So we followed the Eagle guidance to sample and test the sediment, submitted it to a testing facility, and they tested for all of the things that Eagle tells us we need to test for. And what we found is actually that it was below the allowable limits for all of the things, and they're, they're listed there, I won't go through every one of them, but basically the tests came out good. So what that means for us, as far as the feasibility study goes, we're particularly interested in this, not only for environmental considerations, but also how much the cost to remove the dam, if the sediment is contaminated with anything that we, maybe has restrictions on what we can or can't do with it, that can add quite a bit of cost to a dam removal. So luckily, that's not the case here. I'm going to go over a few just key considerations, like Sean alluded to earlier. The study is primarily about the feasibility of removing the dam, but part of that is also looking at alternatives. Obviously, the main alternative would be keeping the dam. If we were to remove the dam, one of the major things that we're looking at is what happens to the historic mill race. So if you remember, the dam was rebuilt by Henry Ford to power the mill, so there's actually a channel that runs under US-12, under the Wellers Building into the Taylor Race, and you can see that on the aerial image there. So if we remove the dam, the water level naturally would be too low to get to that channel. So there's some things we can do to maintain flow through that, and we'll get into more detail in the report for that. It's, it can make this meeting last very long. So, but it is definitely something that we're looking at, so I'm not going to get into too much detail on it right now, but I just want to make it known that that's an important thing that we're, we have on our minds. Obviously, channel restoration, we kind of touched on, there's, Aaron Snell provided kind of recommendations about the, the cross-section of the channel if we were to remove the dam. Talked about sediment management earlier, and then there's a smaller dam downstream of the Celine River Dam, it's not a regulated dam, it's only a few feet tall, it's in Curtis Park, and we're, we would, we would plan on likely removing that dam as well if we were to remove the Celine River Dam, just remove them both, get back to more of a natural channel. For rehabilitation of the dam, some considerations are short-term repair, so you could see in the pictures that Sean presented on, there are some things that really need to be addressed structurally with the Celine River Dam, and that's going to, you know, cost some money upfront, so we need to consider that. Also, the lifecycle costs, if we keep the dam, there's ongoing maintenance costs. At some point in the future, it'll have to be replaced, might have to be improved upon again. And also, Sean mentioned the capacity requirements that may or may not change following the dam safety task force recommendations, future regulations are adopted. So I'm going to show some artist renderings of what the Celine River Dam could look like post-removal. These are obviously very preliminary in nature, it's not, there's, there's not a particular, like, exact look of what it might be that would come through final design, but these are good samples of what it may look like. There's kind of a comparison here, obviously the left is just the natural state of things right now, and on the right, we're trying to kind of demonstrate what the impoundment area might look like. Obviously, we're not going to just remove the dam and just let everything go and be a sloppy sediment mess. It would get restored, there's different ways that that can look, but the simplest version, it could essentially be a big lawn, basically Mill Park just getting much, much larger. The yellow line, if you can see that, is the Celine River Valley Trail that is slated to be constructed next summer, I believe. So that's happening whether the dam is removed or not, so we just wanted to show that. And then the red line is just potential future trails that could be added for more connectivity. I believe there were tentative plans, the city wanted to provide direct connectivity between Mill Pond Park and Curtis Park, but M.D.A. wouldn't allow a mid-block crossing. So if the dam is removed, the channel under the bridge would naturally get narrower, and that, we're hoping that might allow a possibility for a trail actually going under the bridge. And I'll show a sample of what that would look like in a later slide. Then up at the upstream end, there's been some talk of potentially adding connectivity to the park west of the river with a pedestrian bridge. So here's a drone photo that we took about a month or two ago. Obviously, that's US-12 crossing the frame and then looking upstream southwest, and this is our rendering of what the area potentially could look like post-removal. And again, you can see the trail running under US-12, a little trail spur connecting up to the sidewalk along US-12. And then along the right there is the Celine River Valley Trail that will be constructed next year. The slide, I think, does a good job of demonstrating the scale of how much larger the park would potentially get with the dam removal project. And then again, this is a little bit farther upstream, still facing northwest. And then again, this demonstrates sort of scale of how much smaller the water surface would get and how much larger the park could get. These are just some samples, just aesthetic features that could be applied post-dam removal. The lower left is actually in Village of Dundee, right downtown, there's a little trail that goes under M-50, and then in the upper right, it's just a sample of a park in Ohio with some, they call it a nature scape, like a play feature, has a semi-natural look. To the point that I made earlier about, you know, if we were to remove the dam, it wouldn't just be rip the dam out and let the river just do its thing and potentially have a mess. This is the Brown Bridge Dam removal, took place, I believe, in 2011. So that first picture on the left, all of these pictures are taken from the same vantage point of the same area, but that first one on the left was very shortly after the dam removal, so you can see it's a little bit messy, but it's somewhat restored. But then, just in two years, by 2013, they established a meandering channel through that field. All of that, I guess what you see as a field right now, was all impoundment, it was all completely underwater, held back by the dam. So in two years, they had that channel stabilized, and then fast-forward ten, eleven years to February 2024, you can see that channel hasn't changed. So that just kind of demonstrates how quickly we can restore a channel and get it stabilized. So I'm going to talk a little about, about the alternative analysis, and this table on this slide and the next one is the same as this sheet, and if you want one and didn't get one, I think they were stacked at the table in the back, so you can take that home with you. I'm going to kind of highlight a few of these things, so this is comparing pros and cons of, not pros and cons, it's comparing removing the dam versus rehabilitating. So naturally, were to remove the dam, that's a pretty big cost upfront, we're estimating about four to six million dollars, there's some variability in that depending on which specific alternative removal is used. Benefit of that, though, is almost no costs related to this dam into the future, the only real cost is the ongoing operation and maintenance. As you saw in the renderings, you have a much larger lawn for Mill Pond Park that has to be mowed, and the city estimated that about three thousand dollars per year for lawn mowing, just to add that extra space. For rehabilitating the dam, back to Sean's slides, there are some structural repairs that are necessary, and those would have to come fairly quickly, and we're estimating that around one to one and a half million dollars. The drawback of that is, at some point, the dam will have to be either completely overhauled or possibly replaced entirely, whether that be due to further deterioration or, again, updated regulations. If we need to add capacity to the dam, that might be cause for a complete replacement, and we estimate that around six to eight million dollars. And then obviously, with keeping a dam, there are ongoing costs, there's dam safety inspections, city should be exercising the radial gates every so often to make sure that they are still operable, just cleaning up the debris from the spillway, emergency action plan updates and trainings, just general maintenance of the dam, and we estimate that around an average of sixteen thousand dollars per year. Some years it'll be more, some will be less, because like the, the dam safety inspections, for example, are only every three years, but there's more things that just arise naturally if something fails and needs to be addressed. Then for benefits and drawbacks, we kind of brainstormed this, and I'd be very interested, there's, as Mayor said, there's opportunity for public participation and comments. We're very interested to hear any other things that anybody has to offer to this, if there's any other benefits or drawbacks. But the big ones for us are the removal of the liability and the hazard of just plain having a dam, and also the long-term costs of having a dam. So as I mentioned in the last slide, there's, of course, the cost of the improvements that are necessary. At some future date unknown, it'll likely have to be replaced, and then obviously there's the ongoing maintenance and operational costs. But of course, benefits of keeping it, I don't, you know, many of you are very passionate about keeping the dam, the history of the dam, the aesthetics of the dam, and that's very important to consider as well. And then drawbacks, I kind of already touched on, the, the cost of keeping the dam is high, the hazard and liability is, can be high. But of course, removing the dam, you know, if you, if you love Mill Pond and love seeing it every day, that's, that's definitely a drawback. So I'll kind of start to conclude here, like I said, we're very interested in any input or questions anybody has. There'll be an opportunity tonight for anybody who wants to speak, and then our email addresses are there, you can email me, Kevin Wilks, my email is on there, or Teshia Humphreys, or both. Like the mayor said, these slides will be available on the city website, so you'll be able to find the email addresses that way also. Moving forward, we'll be evaluating all of the input that we received from you and doing our best to include it in the report. There, I'll just caveat that with some things might be a little bit out of the scope for just an initial feasibility study, definitely things, there's a lot of things to consider, some of them might just be more for final design, but we are very interested in hearing anything anybody has to offer, and then we will conclude with the finalizing of a report. So I think that concludes our presentation, and I believe Mayor Mile is going to moderate questions.
Very good. Gentlemen, thank you. Engineer Humphreys, City Manager O'Toole, are there any additional remarks that you'd like to add at this time before we open it up for questions, comments? Very good. Please recall that tonight's town hall is being recorded, we are going to jump back and forth between questions and comments from those of you who are in the audience and those who are participating remotely. For those of you who are watching us online on YouTube, you can simply type your question in, and either myself or Mr. Goodman will read it out loud for, for the group's benefit. I do have two questions, gentlemen, that were submitted to me in advance of tonight's town hall. I believe the latter question has been addressed, but I'll, I'll ask it anyways, but the first question, is there a middle ground? If the dam was run at its minimum level, would that trigger a lower set of state standards that would allow the dam to continue? In that case, would the cost of, excuse me, in that case, would the cost of Celine River mitigation be minimized?
I guess the answer's always yes, we can, there is middle ground, I'm sorry, yes, there is opportunity for a middle ground. There's a lot of things to consider in a partial, sometimes those get actually ordered by Eagle, and the required, you actually literally have to draw an impoundment down and not necessarily empty it, but you, you definitely reduce risk by drawing an impoundment down, and you may not have to put as much money into it, but you're going to be kind of stuck in between having a full functional impoundment and not having a full river, you're kind of in this middle land where it's partially flooded, shallow water, and maybe it doesn't really serve either function very well of being a river or a lake. But that's, always can be considered. There are some impoundments that are remote where that's exactly what's been done, because the cheapest thing you could do is just pull the gates and let the water flow through it. So it's, I guess it's not probably off the table, but there's some aesthetic impacts.
Good. And I think the second question-
because the cheapest thing you could do is just pull the gates and let the water flow through it. Um, so it's, I guess it's not probably off the table, but there's some aesthetic impacts.
Okay, good. Um, and I think the second question has largely been addressed, but if, uh, any of the three gentlemen on our panel would like to add, um, any additional information, we welcome that. Has a survey been done on the amount of sediment that would have to be removed in order to have an accurate estimate? Has the sediments been tested for heavy metals such as lead, mercury, or chromium, and persistent organic compounds such as PCBs?
This is microphone, okay. Um, so yes, we did do the survey of the impoundment, including the sediment. The volume of sediment that would have to be managed can somewhat depend on the final design of the project, whether it's the bare minimum to cut the proposed channel through the impoundment, or removing all of the sediment. And I think what we're anticipating is not having to remove all of the sediment. And yes, we did perform sediment testing and analysis following Eagle guidelines. Um, and that was on one of our slides here. We tested for all of the things that are included in the Eagle guidance, so all of the heavy metals that you see there. Um, I'm not sure about PCBs specifically, I would have to double check on that.
Very good, thank you. We will open it up for questions or comments now. If you simply will raise, if you simply would like to raise your hand, I'll be coming around with the mic, and again, I may be jumping back and forth between those in the audience and those who are participating remotely. The only thing I'd ask is please do not monopolize or filibuster, we want to try to get as many comments tonight as, as is possible. So if you can exercise a little bit of brevity, we would appreciate that. I'll start right over here. If you'd like to introduce yourself, we would encourage that as well.
Thank you, I'm David Rhodes, uh, live at 663 Spring Brook Court here in Saline, around for about 10 years now, excuse me. Um, and we would like to see the dam remain, um, with its necessary rehabilitation. One of the things that the Friends try to do, have worked on, is to make the lower portion of the Saline River navigable for recreational use. And, uh, while there has been some improvement, it's been very difficult, because there are times when the depth of the Saline River further downstream is so low that you can actually walk across it. Um, and that, that's an issue. So Mill Pond is the only current safe area for people to kayak or canoe or paddle boat on. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'm going to jump to our tech booth here, inquire with Mr. Goodman, do we have any written comments that have been submitted thus far? Yeah, please.
Okay, this question comes...
Hold on one second, it's resetting. Give me one second.
Can you talk about the quality of Mill Pond? And the dam is removed, it seems to be, uh, there's a high significant algae bloom. What, um, future costs, uh, would be included in dredging Mill Pond?
Is that in reference to keeping the dam in place and Mill Pond in place?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, that we have not specifically looked into, um, because our study is primarily focused on the dam removal.
So let me ask a follow-up to that question, then. If, uh, the consensus is to preserve the existing asset, would that analysis have to be done? Or would it be advantageous to have it done?
I don't think it has to be done, um, and as far as if it's advantageous, I think that's up to, um, what the city wants to do. So it could be, if you, if you were interested in doing that.
Very good.
Hi, Scott Myron, 351 Ponview Street. I just was curious, is the January 31st, 2025 date, does that coincide with the dam risk reduction, um, the, the grant application deadline? Is that, are we considering options for, for both keeping the dam or removing the dam as part of, uh, an application to the state for funding?
Right now, I agree that, can everybody hear me? Hello? Um, looking for funding opportunities for both of the options is absolutely the city's next step, um, after the feasibility study is finalized, but that January 31st deadline is just, um, something we came up with to, you know, after the holidays, that we were trying, we're truly soliciting feedback, we want feedback from, so it, that's not tied directly to any grant or regulatory, um, requirement. Um, as a next step after this feasibility study is finalized, I, we do need to seek funding, as you can see, there, there, we were in the $6 million range there for either option. That's not something that the city just has readily available. Um, the dam is unfunded, there's not a funding source for the dam, right? There's no revenue associated with the dam. So, um, looking for funding is our next step for, um, I envision that we will be looking for funding for both options, and that funding will likely dictate the ultimate decision, is my guess.
Follow-up question?
Well, I guess, I mean, it would seem, it would make sense that if we're trying to make a decision soon, obviously, um, this is something that, you know, takes time to understand, but I don't know, I don't know, uh, how often those, um, those grants are renewed, or is it on an annual basis that the state of Michigan, uh, offers? Okay, I, I see, okay. So if we didn't hit the January 31st deadline in 2025, we could apply, uh, the following year for similar, uh, funding, um, as the city figures out their options.
Yes, exactly, and in fact, this, this feasibility study would need to be finalized before we applied for that funding. I don't know if Mason, if you wanted to, is it with Eagle? We, we luckily have the...
We have some, we have some folks from Eagle this, here this evening? Would you like to introduce yourselves and comment on that?
Yeah, sure. Mason Manisak, Eagle Dam Safety, I run the Dam Risk Reduction Grant Program. Um, in terms of the grant program going forward, um, we are operating our third year right now. We awarded Saline the grant for their, they're in our first year. Um, we are in our final year of committed funding, but we are, um, trying to leverage the legislature to refund the program to keep it going for another year, but currently, this is our last year. Um, so we do not know if we're going to be offering the program again in the fall of 2025. That being said, um, dam removal versus dam rehabilitation, um, from the state's perspective, I guess I would echo a point or a comment that I've heard, um, throughout the night, is that we're hoping that dam owners and operators are proactive in the management of their dam, which the city, um, has taken the correct steps, in our opinion, to do that. Um, but in terms of the funding mechanisms for that, um, dam removal is definitely probably more the, more attractive, uh, option at this time. There's just more federal and state sources to draw from, um, that you could use to remove a dam as a pair to rehabilitate, rehabilitating the dam. Not to say that the Dam Risk Reduction Grant Program wouldn't, um, you know, put funds forward to repair a dam, but, um, as I mentioned, we're not, we don't have a upcoming cycle to rely on for that. So there's other sources you could look to utilize from federal sources or, um, other state programs.
Thank you for that comment, appreciate your, uh, attendance this evening. Mr. Goodman, any additional questions from those who are participating remotely?
No.
No, at this time, okay. Again, if you're, uh, participating via YouTube, we would welcome comments, simply type them in, and we will, uh, we will read them momentarily. Tom?
Hi, I'm Tom Albach, live at 1240 Colony Drive here in town. A couple of questions. One is, um, there's a public comment period that goes until the end of January. Will the questions that are posed during that time be answered, and will the answers and questions be published somewhere?
The, the intent is to include all of the public comments in the feasibility study. Um, the extent it, to which they will be answered, I cannot guarantee it, depends on what the questions are. Is it something that needs to be further evaluated later on in a later phase, such as design? Um, but, or is it something that we can tackle and include in the feasibility study? We're going to take as much as we can and include it in the feasibility study, that's the intent. That's why we want to hear from folks. We actually have a little bit of money left on the table with the grant, um, so we'd like to utilize as much funding as we can to answer and evaluate this as much as possible. But some of the questions, by nature, just might be something that we cannot do at this time, that will be noted, but we definitely want to document it's going to be an appendage of portion of the feasibility study, that's the intent.
Okay, thank you. And if, if FEMA's increased flow requirement became the law, the regulation, how many of Michigan's 813 registered, or whatever they are, dams would become unsatisfactory overnight?
I don't know that answer, but it's going to impact a lot of dams. I mean, it's...
It looks, it looks like that. I mean, is that realistic? You've got, you've got any example comparisons of flows that they're two hundred years and a thousand years?
So it's, it's the difference, I think, between five inches today roughly for the 200-year and seven and a half inches? So that's a full, you know, 50% higher. Does that equate to flow? It's not exactly, but it can give you a sense, it's probably not too far off. Um, yeah.
Additional questions? You got one, um, from those participating remotely? Yep.
Regarding the Mill Race Tunnel, is it in need of repair?
Did you catch that?
We're not certain.
Make sure you're talking into the mic, get as close to as possible.
We have not gone completely through the Mill Race Tunnel to evaluate if that specifically is in need of repair yet. The Mill Race Tunnel, um, to keep it operable is a, still being evaluated right now, um, exactly how that might look. So we know that it's feasible to remove the dam and, um, basically disconnect the Mill Race Tunnel, but we also realize that's a, a major issue. Um, so we, we would like to evaluate further the possibility of keeping the Mill Race Tunnel.
Very good. Additional questions from those in the audience? Yep?
Hi, Marsha Castellani, 351 Rosebud. I was wondering if you could just say again, uh, the cubic yards that you expected to remove? I know you kind of talked about it, but I didn't quite get the number of cubic yards of sediment expected to be removed, uh, because I understood that the, uh, the Eagle Guidance on sampling, uh, is dependent on the number of cubic yards to be removed, and I think you took eight. Um, and the other thing, I wondered if, uh, you listed where those samples were taken? And if you don't have that, if you can include that in the information that's released to the public?
Yes, we have that information. I don't recall it off the top of my head, but it is going to be included in the report. So, uh, a portion of the report will be dedicated to the methodology of the sediment sampling, um, how we got the samples, how they were tested, how many they, um, how many samples were taken and where they were taken from. The slide, so we're showing that there's 74,000 cubic yards of sediment in the impoundment, but we're hoping to have to remove less than that. Um, I don't recall off the top of my head what exactly that number is, but it's, it's malleable based on what final design actually comes out to. So I, I wouldn't say that it's set in stone right now, anyway.
Very good. Uh, Ben, any additional questions from those participating online? Not right now, okay. Additional questions from the audience?
My name's Eric Grossman, I live on Macon Road, uh, just downstream from this. We have, uh, 45 acres of our family property that is going to be, uh, the next NAP, um, Natural Areas Preservation Park, about 45 acres later this month. And there are sections there that do have a lot of, uh, freshwater mussels, because it's sandy and gravelly down there. One thing I've noticed about the Mill Pond is that it does act as a clarifier to keep that end of the river clean, because it, it's, uh, the Saline River is a very flashy river, and it rises and falls. Um, I've talked to, uh, Dan Brown from the Huron River Watershed Council, who is doing the Ypsilanti and Flat Rock, and one of the reoccurring things in a lot of dams are keeping it, uh, as it is, removing it, but there's also a lot of middle ground, which your study hasn't touched on, and that is reducing the level of the, of the dam to allow the water, um, level obviously to be lower, that makes the, um, dam capacity better, but also leaves an impoundment in, in the park. So are you going to do more of a middle ground and look at, um, working on, on having some kind of impoundment on body of water and allow the, uh, the, the park to actually be bigger where you could walk around bodies of water in the park? I'd like to see, um, you operate on more of the middle ground between removal and, um, rehabilitation.
Um, we, we did look into that, and I do anticipate the final study will have, um, an evaluation. Um, we looked at increasing the capacity of the dam by lowering the head over the dam, so there's multiple ways to increase capacity. Um, and the fact of the matter is that this impoundment's not that deep, so if you lose a couple of feet on the impoundment, you lose quite a bit of the impoundment. That makes sense. Um, so, um, we were, that option was becoming infeasible, um, because the impoundment got so small. But that is something that will be in the final report, absolutely. That is something that, um, we looked at and, um, gaining capacity in that manner.
Can I just add one thing real quick? And this goes back to one of the original questions that was asked about algae growth, et cetera, in the impoundment. The way that this river's going to function over time, the upper watershed's going to keep moving sediment into that impoundment, so it's going to continue to get shallower and shallower over time. Theoretically, at some point, it becomes a marsh with a river running through it. So that's just something else to think about amongst all these conversations here, whether it be water quality or, um, uh, you know, sediment removal from the impoundment, uh, partial removal options. That's, that's a major consideration for, um, you know, it kind of ties things together, I think, in large part.
Very good. Additional questions from those in the audience? I know we've got several folks, we're going to get all of you before we wrap up. Go to you, Dan.
Hi, Dan Burgess, 653 Willster in the city. To the point that was expressed on behalf of the Friends of Saline River regarding the importance of the dam to their efforts to improve, uh, the accessibility of that for recreational opportunities, um, you have in here under benefits that it will improve recreational opportunity for canoeing, kayaking, tubing, et cetera. Can you explain how you came up with that? Was that based on any kind of estimate of the level of the river increasing or something along that lines?
Um, when we put that in there, I think the sense that we had was that by not having, um, dams in the river, it opens more length of, of, of river to be tubing or kayaking or canoeing, essentially. And this is a perfect example of why we wanted public input, because I haven't tried myself canoeing down the lower reaches, so I wasn't aware that that was an issue. So thank you for that comment.
We have another question online. What costs would you expect, uh, regarding the animals that currently live and, uh, around the dam, uh, for birds, fish, turtles, et cetera, if the dam was to be, uh, taken out?
That's a question that comes up with every dam removal that you work on, and it's certainly, you know, there's, there's a, there's a habitat there, um, a stillwater habitat that many fish favor over a, a flowing water habitat. There's, to an extent, uh, riparian vegetation for nesting, et cetera. The general, the general thought process is that by restoring something to its natural condition, you are benefiting the system as a whole. So fish, for example, let's just use that for an example. When I was working up in the impoundment, there certainly are a few different types of fish. Um, we saw bass, we saw bluegill, those are fish that like still standing water, but we also saw a lot of carp, which are an invasive species. And the days that we were out there, that impoundment was so turbid from the carp moving around and spawning, that it really, it was negatively impacting water quality and other fish. So if the dam is gone and there's a river flowing through there, there's going to be a whole different suite of fish, there's going to be a whole different community, um, probably not nearly as many carp, for example, but they're, they'll find their, they'll find their new home probably at the, you know, next impoundment downstream. But those are the kind of, um, impacts that we'd really weigh through the design phase and the permitting phase, um, and something that we haven't talked about, it, anytime you have federal funding for a project, um, say if, if you chose to take the dam out, and if you were awarded a grant through a federal program, it's very likely that an environmental assessment would have to be completed, and each of those different communities would have to be discussed within that plan.
Very good. Additional questions from those in the audience?
Yes, I'm Wendy Weller, and I own Wellers. Uh, so of course, we're really concerned about a lot of issues with this, but I'm just curious, where do you come up with the $6,640... where do you come up with the $6,648? It's a pretty exact number. Where do you come up with that? Is there a line item that we can look at, that people can see? Like, and what is the process of removing the dam? How will it affect traffic? Will Michigan Avenue have to be closed for any period of time? Has MDOT, has anybody talked to MDOT about this?
So, I assume the $6 million you're referring to, what's actually on ClearGov, our capital improvement plan is that? Hello? I said, I got the bad. Yes, oh, okay, I can generally talk louder. So, are the $6 million you're talking to our capital improvement plan like ClearGov, the very exact number that's on ClearGov? Or something that I stated to? So, we have ClearGov as our public-facing website that outlines the current capital improvement plan for the city of Saline. And that number that was just rattled back to me, sounds like maybe that's where it came from, was ClearGov. We have put in there $6 million at the very end of our capital improvement plan as a placeholder right now. That's something we put in there about a year and a half ago as a placeholder because we knew investment in the dam was needed. I think that the $100,000, the extra $100,000 was probably some maintenance required activities that came out of some of these reports. So, there are more details online in ClearGov on that, and I think as far as to answer the question on what could be made available, I think any of the supporting documentation, all of this stuff is absolutely public knowledge. The second part of that question with impacts if the dam were to be removed, again, this was a feasibility study on could it be removed? There's a lot of if, and this is not a decision that the city is making tonight or in the near future. We have to find funding for either of these options. So, how much would it impact? US-12 traffic and those types of things, I think, are a little early to answer some of those questions, but in general, we're planning to use the existing structure of the, that's under US-12 for pedestrian access. So, the existing structure stays in place, US-12 stays in place. What changes is the profile view of the water. Instead of going like this and like this, under US-12, it now goes like that. And so, you gain that headspace under US-12. So, I think that generally, US-12 will look the same, but how the berm adjacent to US-12 will look different.
If I can only say one thing to that real quick, I'm sorry. We did reach out, we have talked with MDOT, kind of indirectly. One of our engineers is a former bridge engineer for MDOT, and we checked a couple of key things. It's scour, bridges can be considered scour critical if they don't have a good foundation. There's certain bridges across the state that have that designation. This is not one of them. So, it's not a scour critical bridge. So, it's, we're still going to have to get approvals, plan reviews, a lot of coordination with MDOT, for sure. But in terms of like the hydraulic impacts of eroding the foundation or something, we're feeling pretty comfortable with that because we've already answered that question.
Very good. Mary?
Hi, I'm Mary Widener. I live on Lampkins. So, my question is, you mentioned threatened species, at least mussels. If there's other endangered species that are found that prefer still water, and if we change the environment for those, we could lose them, and there's no guarantee that they'll make nests upstream or downstream, so they could be wiped out. What laws in Michigan go into effect at that point? And does that improve the chance that we would get money to rehabilitate the dam just to protect those species from going extinct in this area?
Threatened and endangered species are protected in Michigan. My experience through different dam removals has been that state agencies prefer the natural free-flowing condition. So, the same question came up on a project I was working on in the Black River up by Sheboygan, northeast Michigan. We did a mussel survey. We found what's called an eastern pond mussel. That mussel likes calm, stillwater conditions. The state was irritated that we alluded to the fact that that eastern pond mussel is there as a benefit of the dam. We were actually working on a relicensing study for that. They didn't want that listed as a benefit. It's probably a little bit out of you folks' realm, the Eagle staff that are here today, but that's, it's not just endangered species. It's also wetlands. It's also other protected features. In large part, that's something that we've been able to work through, but I don't have a good answer to your question. It's something that would have to be explored and worked through, certainly. There's, I hate to use too much time here, but there's another example, a dam that was removed in Lyons, Michigan, mid-Michigan, on the Grand River. They had a federally endangered species there, the snuffbox mussel. And when you're working with the feds on a project like that, they will actually review the project, and they might issue a take permit for it. So, you can impact that if you show an overall improvement in the system. With the mussels in particular, there's almost always a rescue and relocation that's required. So, if this dam were to be removed and the water draws down gradually, it's likely that I, with a team of people, would be out there collecting fish and mussels. And ahead of time, we'd have a relocation plan set in place so that we can take those individuals and move them to their proper habitat.
Very good. We have an additional question online. If the dam is removed, how long would it take for the land around the park from the impoundment be usable by the public?
It's a tricky question because it does, there's a lot of factors. We found some dams, when you draw them down, there's kind of springs that show up on the edges because there's a groundwater flow that has always headed towards these. And so, if those are popping out on kind of the edge of the impoundment, you get some of that water working its way across. You have some areas that will stay softer. The soil's obviously a very big deal in that question. Some take a lot longer to drain. And so, I couldn't, I can't tell you like, okay, in, you know, 68 days, we'll be able to get on it. It's going to take a solid year for it to dry out. I can almost guarantee you that. If there's areas that have springs, you know, those, we can work on some things that can direct them through a stream and let everything else dry out. But it will take some time to lower that water table through the soils, especially heavy soils, which we have some silts out here, and they're going to take more time to de-water. So, yes, when those pictures, you see them, that's not instant. This is up, these pictures are up north, little sandier soils, so they drain a little faster, you can get on them a little faster. It'll probably take a little longer here. You will have inundation, you will have, it's a floodplain, it's going to flood, and then that'll take a little while to drain out. But ultimately, as you get vegetation and it's starting to pull, the apple transparate, everything out of it, you can get back on it. I wish I could tell you, it's one or two years. I don't, I don't know. But in a couple of years, you should be able to get, yeah, and use it.
No, that's good. Thank you. Friends, we've got about 15 minutes left. If you have additional questions or comments?
Jim Peters, 509 Springbrook. This isn't just about our historic dam or our most popular park. This is really an issue about our heritage and our sense of place here in Saline. Perhaps this should be a referendum or a proposal in upcoming election.
Thank you. Ben, any additional questions online? Questions from the audience?
Hi, I'm Eric Wright. I lived on Saline River Drive overlooking the river. Assuming that we took the dam out, what would we deal with in terms of these high water events, in terms of erosion on this new water channel?
Another good question. Actually, that slide that's up there now, that's part of what my geomorphic study takes into account. We outline the parameters for what this new stream would look like. So, we're going to have a set of widths that we're shooting for, depths that we're shooting for. The new channel would be constructed with very specific floodplain elevations, pools, riffle sequences. So, it's made to function like a natural river. The theory is that over time, it's going to be self-sustaining and take care of itself. But anytime you do a construction project like this, there's a period of time between when it's dug and when it's stabilized, that there is that concern. Your channel, your channel banks, you know, Kenny Road, it's something that we've worked on together quite a few times and have been quite successful at, but you never, it's pretty much guaranteed that right after you're done, you know, digging the project, you're going to get four inches of rain. But it's, that's the answer. There's always that uncertainty, but we've had good success, and there's actually a lot of science that goes behind this type of thing.
Just to add to that, we do, like in our estimate, there's, we call them inline structures, but basically, there's things we can do when we have those erosion problems happening. There's veins, there's woody debris, there's this whole list of different family things that can help kind of naturally try and train the river back away from maybe a problem we're having. So, the idea is to stabilize the river, get it stable, but we also plan for change.
Additional questions or comments?
Hi, a question for city management and also for you guys. So, it's a lot of new real estate being created. I'm assuming that's parkland, city-owned parkland, but that's my question for you guys, what, who owns that land? And there could be pressure to develop the land, especially up near Michigan Avenue. Is that land buildable or does it have to be changed? That's my question.
So, to answer the first part of that question, yes, it would be parkland. It's designated as public parkland at this point, and I don't know to the answer, gentlemen, if any of you have any questions about how the condition of those soils might impact their buildability?
Yeah, I think there's probably two things going on here. So, the engineering component of it is, is the soil stable enough? Could we construct on them? Probably the answer is probably yes for a house or something or a commercial building. I just don't know. It's on MDOT right away, and it's parkland, so I don't know what should actually develop there, so. It will be, yeah, you'll have some regulations for, there will be a floodplain when it goes out of banks. There's sections that would be impacted regulatory-wise. So, you wouldn't be down next to the river, you'd be probably more like up by the highway.
And I honestly think access to said development would have to be from Michigan Avenue because of the elevations. Obviously, we're in the Saline River Valley Trail. We have large, you know, ridges going up, which is right where we would be in the floodplain, where the parkland is at. That was not in our vision. The vision is, and that's actually, I mean, the park is fully in control of the city of Saline, which, so we fully control all of the surrounding of the impoundment, which is a benefit for the city.
All right. So, I guess this question is about the next steps looking towards funding. So, I'm assuming the conceptual design that comes out of this feasibility report will show what floodplain restoration would look like if you're looking to add any sinuosity to where like, where the impoundment currently is. But I guess looking forward for funding for either restoring or removing the dam, would you be looking at, let's say, for instance, dam removal? Would you be looking at just engineering and design or like a design build? Because, you know, that's quite a process to go through both of those, so that might make you look?
I think all the funding we can get, we'll take. I mean, obviously, construction is the big piece that we need. The construction funds are the big dollar funds that we'll really be looking for. And a lot of times, you get construction grants if you pay for the design, if you pay. But I think any opportunities that people are aware of for either option sending our way, we're looking for funding. Like I said, we do not, we have it projected in our capital improvement plan, but we, just so finance can start looking for money. We don't actually have money sitting around ready to address this issue right now. So, all the funding we can get, we will look into, absolutely.
And to add to that, every funding source has obviously different requirements, so we'll be weighing, you know, some might only be available for a dam removal versus a dam repair or replacement. Some might only be available for construction and not for engineering or vice versa, so we'll be weighing those as well.
Additional questions, comments?
Hi, my name is Karen Peters, and my husband and I live on Saline River Drive. We've lived there for 40 years. And in the 80s, we remember when they drained the Saline River to restock it with fish, and the river disappeared entirely. So, how do I know that that's not how it's going to end up if you remove the dam? When we bought this property, we paid a premium for the lot. You haven't listed any of that as a pro or con. All the people who have property on the Saline River or on Pond View, our views are going to change dramatically. When we brought the property, we were told that it butts up to a park, so nothing would ever be done there. And now, you're talking about drastically changing our view, and that wasn't even listed as a pro or con.
I think the aesthetic features of changing?
Pull that a little bit closer, Tasha.
The aesthetic features may be going to the con. It's listed as a con, and the loss of impoundment is a drawback of removing the dam, but you still are adjacent to a park, and that is...
Additional questions or comments? You? Want to get everybody at least once.
So, just quickly asking, when you're doing these drawings, what are you, what's your expectation of what is the width, what is the depth of the water channel? And have you explored what's going to happen downriver to other communities?
The width and depth of the channel through the park would be approximate the channel that you see existing upstream. The information I've collected so far gives us a pretty good indication of the width. I forgot what the particulars are on that. But this is a shot upstream of the impoundment. You'd expect to see something pretty much that same size going through the park with the adjacent floodplain.
What is the width?
Yeah, it varies, about 40 to 50 feet. And the water depth, of course, varies depending on the day, but those, what we call the bank full depth is about two and a half feet. That's about what that channel would look like.
What is the width of the river now at the widest point?
At the widest point? I don't know about the widest point. We look at typical cross-sections through, typically through riffles. So, that's your hydraulic control in a river. So, it's going to be that plus or minus 35 to 40 feet. As far as downstream communities, we are not changing the volume of water, and I think the previous question alluded to the fact that the river dried up, and I'm not sure what the particulars of that event would have been. But by removing the dam, that's not going to affect the volume of water moving either downstream or coming into the impoundment. So, as long as we have water flowing off of those headwaters, the county drains, et cetera, upstream, you're going to have water flowing through the Saline River, past your properties, through the former impoundment, and on downstream. It's the exact same volume of water that you'd have on an annual basis, you know, with seasonal variation in its existing condition.
Hold on, folks. We got to, we have to speak into the microphone, okay? So, I want to make sure everybody can hear the question and comments that are being asked. Did you have anything further?
Maybe I'll just add, I'm not sure if, so some dams serve the function of like flood control. They can actually reduce the flows downstream. They're very large in relationship to the watershed. So, you get flows into the impoundment, it's stored, and it releases at a lower rate, so actually, you know, it's flood control. It's reducing peak flows into and then out through the impoundment. This dam is very small relative to the watershed. It has very limited, you know, flood attenuating effects. So, pretty much like what Aaron's saying, what goes in the top comes out the bottom. So, when we take the dam out, we're going to lower the profile through there if we took the dam out, and the flows aren't going to really change. This dam is not one of those dams that attenuates floods. Those are very large dams, you know, relative to the watershed. We don't have that.
Very good. We have another question online. Farmers upstream draw water for irrigation. Was that factored into the levels expected of a new river if the dam is removed? Clear on the question, gentlemen?
Yeah, the withdrawal of water from the river, the effects on hydrology coming into the impoundment. I'm sure they take a lot of water out of the river, but what we look at is flood events, and there are very, very large amounts of water coming down the river. Those would have a very small impact. Those would have a very small impact. It would probably be in some drought flow condition where you're drawing this water, where you could have an impact. But really, in terms of what you see, whatever you see downstream of the dam today is what you're going to see in the impoundment tomorrow if it's taken out. Whatever's happening downstream will happen in the impoundment.
Very good.
Yes, my name's Kirk Foppel. I was on city council in '72, '73, '74. And when we rebuilt the dam after it washed out. Just a brief comment. I see an elephant in the living room that we're all dancing around. Very few cities have a jewel. That pond is the jewel of Celine, as is the Waller impoundment. I just, I think it would be a travesty to let that pond turn into a river. There was a fellow that worked for the city back then by the name of Richard Cole. And I flew him over the pond at a very dangerous altitude. And he took dozens of pictures of what it looks like without the impoundment. You don't want to live next to it.
Thank you, Kirk.
Just a quick comment. It might be nice if you added one line item on your, on the cost grid, if you had a total, just so you can kind of compare, you know, compare the two totals over 30 years. Because when you look at it now, you think, oh, in 30 years, there are no expenses. But you really actually paid, you know, four to six million. So it's simple, but it might just make, like I say, when someone's looking at the two columns to see what the total, total amounts are after 30 years.
Going to take just a few more questions. Hold on, folks. I want to make sure that I get everyone at least once. Was there anyone present this evening who had a question and didn't get an opportunity to ask it? Or raise a concern or make a comment? Let me defer to our tech booth one last time. No additional comments or questions for those who are, okay, I've got a gentleman up here.
Just a question about process. So January 31st, the end of comments from this presentation. And then you finalized the feasibility study, correct? When is that expected? And then what would be further public review comment beyond that? Thanks.
How about now? We don't have a specific date right now. It's going to depend a little bit on the quantity of feedback that we get and how much additional effort we put in based on the feedback. So we want to address as much as we practically can, so.
Just to add, if I may, Engineer Humphris, to your point, good question. I suspect that city council will address the issue, discuss it either at a regular meeting or a work meeting sometime in February or March. And for those of you who do not utilize the tool, I strongly encourage you to utilize it in the future. You can access all of our agendas, meeting minutes and support material by going to Minutes on Demand, which is on our city website. It'll also give you updates as to when things are added and when meetings are scheduled. So if you don't utilize that system currently, I would strongly encourage you to do so. Go ahead, Engineer Humphris. You got anything else to add?
I think you got it there.
Okay, perfect. Did I miss anybody else who had a question? You got one in the back? Okay. I'm going to try to wrap it up in about five minutes, folks.
I have two questions from the viewers at home. The first one, how much, what cost to do an environmental assessment downriver in areas such as Mylan to see how this impacts them? And if we do decide to do that, when would that be done?
Clear on the question? Do you have another question after that? Another one?
When done properly, these dam removals do not have that much impact on downstream communities. The volume of water is going to be the same. The wild card is sediment management. So as long as we're able to manage the sediment from the impoundment, once the project's done, well, we're not going to have a sediment catch anymore, a sediment sump. So if any of the dams that are downstream, those impoundments would realize a increased rate of sedimentation because sediment will pass through this town and settle out into the next, next impoundment. Environmental assessment would cover some of that. Project design would cover some of that. Cost on an EA is very, very variable. Environmental assessments, I've worked on anywhere in the range from $30,000 to $100,000.
One more question?
I just want to say it's documents on demand.
Oh, excuse me. You can use both terminology, but you're right, it is documents on demands. Technically, documents on demand. Sometimes I use the old vernacular, Minutes on Demand, same system. Additional questions, comments?
Yes. Tasha, I just have one question for you. Are you a resident of Celine?
Yes, in fact, I bought Mill Pond Park.
Okay.
Oh, you got another one back there?
If the dam, this is a worst-case scenario, if the dam were to fail in its current state and form, what would happen downstream?
Get that question?
Yeah, we did. We're going to pull up the slide, I don't think, on the dam breach. But if the dam were to fail, you're basically, most likely, obviously, you're going to have, depending on the rate of failure, some dams fail quickly, some take time to fail. If it was a very quick failure, you're going to have a breach wave that would go downstream and could affect bridges potentially. If anybody's in its path, they could be harmed. Then after that, though, then the sediment's going to release if it's low enough. If there's, if the dam breach is low enough, then all the sediment we're talking about will start to migrate downstream, in essence, uncontrolled. And so, and that's just going to work its way down and it's going to start settling at different places. It's going to push the river around. And there's, you know, the impacts biologically, I'm going to turn over to Aaron, but that would be probably the two main impacts. A wall of water and then sediment migration.
I think, you know, rather than a specific biological discussion, we can allude to what Sean mentioned earlier, is that the owner of the dam is actually liable for that failure. And, yeah, I've seen, I've seen fines in excess of, well, this was for Edenville, just $80 million for just mussels, damaged the mussel community. So it's not only is it going to wash out bridges, is it going to sediment the river? But depending on the impacts that it has to the biological communities, there can be pretty significant fines.
Very good. Ben, we're going to end the questions from those participating remotely, but we do have, I think, a few remaining in the audience here.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment with regard to some of the fears that I'm hearing expressed by the community of what it's going to look like after the dam's removed. And you had a really nice sketchup. And I just wonder, how similar to what you've designed here or predict it could look like? How similar could it look like to Dexter's Walk, Riverwalk, which is absolutely beautiful? And that would add value to those who are living next to the dam area right now that, yeah, sure, you're overlooking water, but if you're overlooking something that looks beautiful, like a parkway like Dexter's, I think that would add equal value. So if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
I've actually worked in the city of Dexter on the river there. I've done some work post-dam removal, specifically fish habitat improvement. I think there's probably a lot of examples by now. I don't know how readily available they are for folks to see online or anything like that, but certainly visit communities that have removed dams. There's a, there's a growing list of them, certainly. I've been involved, there's a Freeport Dam, Lake Kathleen, a lot of rural ones. There's, Kevin mentioned some of the alternatives for what things can look like afterwards. You basically end up with a blank slate. It can be anywhere from, you know, recreational facilities to natural wetlands to offline ponds. It's a blank slate. Once that impoundment's gone, there's many, many things that you could do. And I would expect that the city would probably solicit input from the community on what they'd like that to look like.
Yes, and I certainly, as a, as a longtime member of the community and user of Mill Pond Park, where my kids play in the park, where I often see people playing in the park, is on the north end of the park where the river is not impounded. The entire park could look like that. Curtis Park is, one of my favorite parks, always has been here. Max Adler, I love the trails down at Max Adler. It's just as an owner of the infrastructure that needs substantial investment in it. Like I say, I'm proud that we're looking at this ahead of when we need to make a decision.
We're going to take one last question. I'm assuming that our guests and staff can stick around for maybe 10, 15 minutes at the conclusion of the town hall. If individuals have specific questions, concerns they'd like to address with you individually, is that correct? Very good. And again, we have a number of council members here, and I failed to introduce, Councilor Seo has joined us. And then we have our Assistant City Engineer and Parks and Rec Director as well. We're going to take one last question.
Yes, as far as keeping a virgin of the impoundment, I know Chestening and Frankenmuth have what's called a rock ramp, which combines the impoundment with the river and allows the fish to travel up and back, up and down. And I believe your firm had something to do with Frankenmuth. Can you elaborate on the rock ramp?
Definitely. We've been involved with several, Green River Dam is one. We did up north around Manslona. That's a very natural-looking one. What we've found basically with eagle, they were kind of popular, I don't know, 10 years ago. A rock ramp still has head on it, still has potential to cut. And so there's still risks seen associated with the rock ramp. We've laid them out so fish can pass on them. That's what we're doing, is we're kind of balancing fish passage with removal. So if we did a rock ramp here, we could keep the impoundment, but we still have, there's probably still some liability because you have had, you still kind of have a dam, if you think about it. So it's a trade-off. Just to talk in funding, because that's where everything hits the road on this, is funding for rock ramps, I've seen, just drop right off. Like, we work with a lot of communities and dams across the state. And we work with the Northwest Conservation Resource Alliance, can pretty much find a grant anywhere. And we found that they want the removals, you know? And so finding funding for keeping the dam really comes back to a local issue of how do you fund it? Is it coming out of general fund? Is it an assessment? It becomes a local issue. I just want to be really honest on that. It's hard to find money to repair a dam. It really is. I don't know if, I mean, I don't think I'm talking out of turn here. Not to say that you can't find it, but it is a lot easier to find a dam to remove the risk. So find money to remove the risk.
Very good. Gentlemen, thank you. Tasha, Colleen, thank you very much. Folks, there is a fact sheet on the back table. We will make more of this one-page document available. We'll put it up at the front counter at City Hall. Can you go to the final slide for just a moment?
Thank you.
Basically, the final slide reiterates that we'll be accepting public comment, questions, concerns until January the 31st. If you, again, if you have friends, neighbors, associates who live in town or anywhere in the community who'd like to provide feedback, please have them email either Kevin or Tasha Humphris, or you could direct it to City Council or to the city manager. Again, we appreciate the evening and most of us will stick around. Have additional questions, concerns? Thanks so much. Have a great evening, folks.